areas and have color coded in those theme colors throughout the website and also on iHeart Mac and our Citizen Lab Engagement Tool. Subsequent to these decisions of the different categories and the approved projects that were made in 2021, state ARPA funding came along primarily in planning and community development for business resiliency and recovery projects. And we're not talking about that segment of the projects. We're talking about the three to the left, the three areas of emphasis for the projects. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So just for reference, you also have a packet. In your packet, there's a lot of information on each of the projects, what they're doing right now, what their status is. But this is just a slide to bring it all back to the three different sections, the innovative, high-impact projects, the immediate impact, community projects, and the internal efficiency and effectiveness. The first 28 projects were in one of those three categories, and this just lays that out for you. Jennifer may have something to add to this. I'm not sure if you wanted to talk about totals, or we can just move on if you'd like.
Yeah, I just want to mention, I printed out a dozen copies of, and they're in each corner, if, of not the entire staff report, but just the ARPA status update, in case anybody wanted that on paper. And this doesn't have the totals, but, but in terms, in terms of our originally allocated the innovative, high-impact projects and the immediate community impact projects, so the public-facing projects made up 80% of the funding allocation and 20% were for internal efficiency and effectiveness types of projects. So just to give you a sense of the balance, and with the request for new funding, the balance stays similar, it's, but it shifts to 22%, as opposed to 20% would be internal, internally facing, and the balance would be community-facing projects. Just a little bit more in the numbers background. So that's all I have to add here, Mandy.
Okay, we can move to the next slide. So this slide is just a kind of level set, what we're talking about today initially. As a reminder, when budgets were originally formed, I wasn't here at the time, but in 2021, there was a, not much known about ARPA and the project itself and how it has evolved into becoming so much of a flexible discretionary funding tool. Not much was known about our world and economic conditions and our future at the time. So keeping in mind that the budgets that were developed in 2021 are now, in many cases, different if we want to complete the projects as expected. So to give a little grace in thinking around how budgets were created in 2021, they would have been, if all 28 projects were completed to budget, using the original budget formulation, it was $6,697,850 out of the approximately $7.7 million that were granted to McMinnville in this fund. What we're talking about today is a need of an additional $301,621,000 to make the projects whole and to get them to completion using a little bit tighter budget strategy. Jennifer and I met back in December and January with each of the project leaders in connection in part with the regular budget meetings to help us understand the revisions that would be needed in order to meet the project funding goals. And so what you're seeing right here is an overview of what the total additional funds needed would be, bringing us to $6,999,471. The next slides we're going to see here are going to go into deeper into what would be changing, which projects are coming in under budget, which would be likely coming in needing more funds. And because we have department heads and project leaders in the room, I'm just going to go through these really quickly, and I'm going to summarize the input that was provided in those December and January meetings during those, during the ARPA budget discussions with Jennifer. And we can, we have time to discuss and answer questions later, but I want to get through the slides to make sure that they're all covered. So the three projects that we know of right now in the original 28 that would be returning funds, the ARPA Grant Manager Project, now that we can forecast better, is estimated to have unused funds. Municipal Court Renovation Project is a completed project, and so we know that there is $5,395 unused. The Broadband Access Project may seem like a strange sore thumb on the list there, but the reason that there's so much that is not going to be needed for broadband access is that the state of Oregon governor's ideas and initiatives for broadband projects that weren't available or known to us in 2021 are now available. So we would not be able, wouldn't need to use ARPA funding to achieve the same goal in the region for some of the broadband access projects. So there would be a return of over $412,000 for that. Go ahead for the next slide. So this slide, and then subsequently, the next slide that will be following this, are the projects that are requesting more money in order to meet the goals of completion, and they're still within the 28 original projects. The first two at the top are requesting funds primarily to add staff support either in fiscal year '23 or '24. Initially, the estimates that we received, we hoped that the staff time that's already part of our existing McMinnville staff and our funds to provide staff would be enough to get these projects to completion within the timeframe. But we now know that these staff, these projects are time-consuming and are going to need more staff time with, to meet the deadlines that we have for ARPA projects. The next one on the left-hand side in the center is Discovery Village Splash Pad, and that's one of the most well-used and most-loved projects and parks in McMinnville. They're requesting additional funds so that they can maximize the use of ARPA funds to add additional features. In the center, moving to the right, Conference Room Technology. This project was able to bring technology forward like we're using today to outfit conference rooms and allow our virtual meetings to have the best technology that we can to be inclusive of all citizens in the community. And there's still additional projects that have not been completed, so there's a request of additional funds. On the bottom-left corner, the HVAC replacement for the library. And while that again was done, the budget was done with good intent and trying to be as accurate as possible, on further scrutiny, we've found, our experts and our project leaders have found that we really would benefit from a consultant to give us a better and more firm estimate on the costs and the best approach to replace the HVAC in the library for the city, to best use the ARPA funds. A way forward with a consultant will give us a better idea of what the actual costs are going to be. And then finally, on this slide is ambulance replacement. And just to put a little reminder, a little star next to this, the ambulance replacement may have some impacts depending on the status of the fire department in terms of a new process on how to complete that project. But this is to add the remaining accessories, pushing the budget over by about $20,000. So the last four slides are the, our last four projects that are requesting funding are the library electric vehicle. I would say that's about as good a budget as you could possibly forecast, requesting $196 to finish that up. IS Security VPN. This and the financial forecast software are really the same reasoning. Both of these two projects require contracts for, that could be bent, that benefit from an extension. The longer the contract, the lower the per annual, the annual cost was. So fitting it within the terms and conditions and the allowable eligible ways to spend funding, we really think that we can maximize those contracts by extending the contract length and then adding costs to the, the projects, of course, but really maximizing and leveraging ARPA to the best. And then the last one on there is the general COVID costs, and I'm going to let Jennifer speak about this one.
Yeah, so, so most of these dollars that I'm requesting have actually been spent. In, in the end of fiscal year 2022, the impact of COVID on our first responders was significant, and that was back when we had a separate sick leave bucket for COVID-related costs. And so I, when we were making the forecast, it just, it didn't occur to me that I would need to budget for almost every staffer to be out for a week or two due to the impact of COVID. So that's, that's where this overage comes from.
Okay, so thanks. The next couple of slides that we're going to do, we are going to delve into two projects. We have two volunteers, the first from the library electric vehicle project, and the second will be coming from communication engagement and translation project. So the first is for Adam. He's going to step up and guide us through a few slides to spotlight their, their project with the library electric vehicle. I don't know, but I think he's in person, so I'm just going to mute and listen in.
Hi, everyone. I'm Adam Carlson. I work at the library as the circulation supervisor. Thanks for having me tonight. Tonight, I just want to talk about the library electric vehicle. In, just give you some background, in April of 2020, right after COVID started, we got the idea to start doing home deliveries of materials. And started the program, and we didn't have a vehicle. We were using our own vehicles to do it initially. And then about a month after we started, luckily and generously, the fire department had a vehicle that they were getting rid of, and we, so they gave it to us, and we were able to use that. Then we kept on using that for about two years, and eventually started researching what it would take to, to get a new vehicle. And we started looking at electric vehicles just because with deliveries, we do a lot of stopping and starting, a lot of idling, and it's just wasted gas, basically, when we're doing that. And so finally, in December of this past year, we actually made the purchase, but it took almost a, over a year for us to actually go from researching to, to making the purchase. As far as what the benefits of having an electric vehicle or just a new vehicle in general, well, first of all, we can continue the program. The, even though it was great that we got a vehicle from the fire department, the vehicle had a ton of miles on it, it was falling apart, and I don't think we would have been able to go very much further on that vehicle. In addition to that, I would kind of highlight just the advantages of an electric vehicle. There's less pollution, and also I would say more safety. Just in terms of the program itself, there is a lot less cars going to and from the library due to the program itself. I'd also say, as far as city government capacity, we're reducing future costs, and we're providing faster and more reliable delivery services. Obviously, there's reduced fuel costs, but improved reliability of the vehicle. We're no longer tied to the cost of gasoline, which I know, I noticed is going up this week, past week. Also, just as far as safety-wise, the new vehicle does have a navigation panel that we can use, that the, the delivery drivers can use, and that's, and it's a touchscreen, and it's very helpful to have something like that as they're going from stop to stop, because they're making stops every couple minutes or so. So then what I would also talk about is just lessons learned. First of all, I would say I would definitely budget more time and money towards something like this in the future. Just due to high demand and little supply, due to global supply chain issues, it was really hard to find a vehicle that would fit within the, the budget. And then just in the future, anytime you're starting something new, it can take a lot of time and effort to figure out the ins and outs and the logistics of how to, for instance, where are we going to charge the vehicle? When are we going to charge the vehicle? What do we need to be able to charge the vehicle? That kind of thing. I don't have any background in electric vehicles, so I didn't know any of this kind of stuff going into it. As far as statistics about what we know so far, we've driven the vehicle about 1,700 miles so far. That's about 120 miles a week. We have, last month, we did 633 deliveries, and we still have about 820 people signed up for the home delivery program. So it's still a very popular program. I've done some math, and it's really hard to figure this out, but my estimate, which is a very conservative estimate, is we're, we're saving about $113 a month just on fuel costs from this. And that's based off of the EPA saying we're getting about 119 miles a gallon on, or equivalent miles per gallon on this vehicle. That comes out to 4.6 metric tons of CO2 a year. It's not going into our air in our community. And the final thing I'd like to just share with you is some feedback from Facebook we got from someone, just on the program, because I like to talk up the program. "We love home delivery. We were the envy of our relatives around the country during the months of social distancing, and now it is an amazing service that we don't need, but really, really appreciate. It is so nice to place books and movies on hold, and if we don't make it to the library, they come to us. I also love being able to return items through home delivery. Our schedules are really busy, but we still have access to all the books. My kids squeal for joy when they see a delivery from the library. Thanks for all you do." So thanks, thanks for having me tonight, and that's it.
Mayor, while we transition to the next presentation, Adam is remarkably humble, and it's true that it took the whole library team to deliver this service to the community, but Adam was the inspiration and the primary architect for this entire system, and he deserves a lot of credit for that.
Thank you.
Great, well, I think Noel is joining us online. Yeah, I see her, so. Noel will need to be able to be a speaker.
All right. Hello, everyone. Glad to be joining you this evening to talk about iHeart Mac. And so this project evolved originally from being centrally focused on the translation of the city's critical documents, and to really being able to cast a wider net on providing those tools or resources that we felt the city needed for, to provide more accessible outreach. Most of you are familiar at this point with the city's civic engagement platform, and it was a strategy that was derived from, you know, how many cities in the greater Portland metro area were using to engage their community members. We're still in the initial launch of this program, and we've been working through the kinks and the best way to showcase our projects and tie them back to the information that's on the city's website. Next slide. I was able to pull some initial statistics from the platform at the stage, even though it's a little early for that, I figured it didn't hurt to share them right now or what we know so far. And we've had just under 1,000 unique visitors to our platform, with about a 46% registration rate, meaning that of those folks who have visited our page, just under half of them have decided to create a free account. Facebook and the city's website are the city's biggest referrers to iHeart Mac, followed by our Instagram page, and then as you can see, we've got lots of folks visiting us by direct entry, meaning that they're typing iHeart Mac into their browser or saving it as a favorite. Most of the folks who visit the platform spend between six and seven minutes on our platform, which is actually not that bad. About 11% of our users identified as Hispanic or Latinx. Some of our users identify, or most of our users, excuse me, identify as female, and the bulk of our users range, their age ranges between the ages of 30 and 69. So I'm reporting on these demographics right now because it's kind of interesting to see who's interacting with the city thus far for the first time, but it's not really fully representative since users have the option for the first 30 days or so whether or not they would want to answer those registration questions. And some of our users bypassed them altogether, so we weren't really able to collect any data on, on some of them. When you view the projects that have been uploaded to iHeart Mac, you'll see that one of the three tags, we've just added these three tags that you see there in the corner to indicate the project space. We created kind of these stamps right on the front of each project, so Planning, Active, or Completed. Mandy, myself, and the temporary assistant that I have working with me right now worked really hard to identify the status of each project and get those up so that it's really easy just to view if you're just curious and you want to skim the site. And, oh, and then I went ahead and I added some examples of some of the comments and the interactions we've received thus far on the page. You can go to the next slide. So what's next? I just went ahead here and just kind of reviewed some of the goals for the platform. Really, just as we develop our understanding and how we want to use the site a little bit better, and working through kind of the change management of how our departments can use the platform, we really, we will add more ways to understand, you know, as time passes, the strengths and weaknesses of what the platform can do for us and how it's working and functioning in our community. So right now, I'm working through a couple of projects that will help us learn the best ways to how we can embed forms and information, and, and we could really start to begin to see the utility of the program and improve as we build that brand awareness, which again takes time, kind of to echo what Adam was saying during his presentation, that logistically and to, to be successful at increasing public awareness of the platform, it takes a lot of administrative time and work with each department to get what I need in order to bring this program to its full fruition. So it's a good work in progress, and it takes a long time, and sometimes that's kind of hard to account for when you're planning for a project like this. In terms of project spend throughout the life of this project, we started with $100,000 allocation, which we will meet at the, at the end of this project by about 70% so far. The earmarked funds will purchase three years of this tool and the support mechanisms that went into it or go into it in terms of the printing costs and the advertisements, additional staffing to get the program off the ground, and then, of course, the contract agreement itself. The remaining funds will be used for translation of those critical documents I mentioned at the beginning, or, you know, or, or for in-person needs as they arise, which I'm still working through with each department to kind of understand the scope of that work. I'm sure Mandy and Jennifer and their team will do a great job in keeping one, everyone updated on that as, as it gets, as it gets to that point. And that's all for me today.
Thanks so much, Noel. That was great. So now we're, we're on the home stretch of what we have ready for presentation. So we're wanting to just leave you with a few basic thoughts in terms of what, what we think would be helpful to discuss, and then we'll let her go.
So great spotlights. Thanks a lot for doing that. I love watching the projects and how they're developing. Some of the ideas that we'd like to have in your mind as you're discussing, asking questions and providing advice and thoughts, is that the ARPA status report that you have in your packet shows the revised forecast, so that's a tool that's going to be able to be a reference tool for you while we're discussing. A reminder that ARPA funding is flexible and discretionary, and some of the definitions around ARPA funding from the original 2021 timeframe are not necessarily the same today. Basically, the recipients of the funding have a lot of flexibility in determining what to do with the funding as long as the funding is used for eligible purposes. As we talked about throughout the presentation so far, capacity, supply chain, and inflation have impacted some of our projects and their, and their budgets, but so also has being better at budgeting and understanding what the actual costs are. And another, just quick reminders, that we're more than halfway through ARPA. ARPA funds need to be obligated or encumbered by December of 2024 and need to be spent by December of 2026. Next slide, please.
Yeah, and just a detail on that, our, our numbers through December 31st are that we've spent $970,000, yeah, $970,000 of the 7.7 so far through December. So we're beginning to make some headway on the spending.
Okay, and on this slide, there's some, a couple of different things, just thoughts for your, your discussion and for your input. In just a second, you'll see a slide that has some funds available and estimate. The staff recommendation is to fund the additional funds needed for the 28 projects to make it over the finish line and complete those projects. There is a resolution sample in the packet as well that would show, give an idea of what a resolution might look like if it were brought at a future meeting. But it's important to kind of stay focused on some of the bullet points here, which are, we really have a flexible choice of what to do with the funding. So the first element is, what, should we fund those 28 projects with the requested funds needed in order for them to get through? And then kind of part two of that is, once we've decided that, whichever decision is made there, what do we do with the remaining funding, which is around $771,000? What do we do with the remaining ARPA funds? Do we use it to combat lost revenue during the pandemic and absorb that into the city's budget? Do we prioritize new projects? And if so, do we go back to the original list that was originally 51 projects? Or do we prioritize altogether new projects, identify new projects, and how would we do that? And the final element, I guess, for consideration in the discussion is to think about, as I mentioned earlier, the fire department and any of the procedures that might need to be added or processes that might be added, depending on what happens with the fire department status, for additional funding that might be needed in the ambulance purchase, or just how to close out those projects. We have a report that's due to the federal government, April, at the end of this month, for our second report, annual report, and that's really what our focus will be in the next couple of weeks. So as promised, this is the slide that shows you the estimated funds available. If we were to add the 301,621 to the original spending authority, it would leave us with a remaining amount of $717,467. And so that would be part of the discussion today, too, is what to do with that amount remaining? Would that be something we would absorb to combat the revenue loss during the pandemic? Would we prioritize new projects? And if so, would they be from the original list, new ones, or a combination of those both? That's really all that we have in our slide pack today, and now is the time for discussion and questions. I'm going to mute. I know that there's going to be quite, there's quite a few people in there that are experts in department, in their departments or in the projects themselves, and they will be available also, I'm sure, to call on if you have any questions that they can address as well. So I'll just be muting, and I think Jennifer, you're, you have that presentation slide deck.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take the...
Great, thank you. Yeah, if you can, if you don't mind removing the presentation slide, and I think we'll start with comments from counselors and budget committee members on Zoom this evening, and so I'm going to just go across my screen here and call on everybody that I see. So if we could start with Debbie Harmon Ferry.
Sure. I guess I just wish we had one of the projects presented be the Splash Pad, only because that seems like the biggest differential between what we were anticipating and what it will actually cost. I don't know that I'm opposed to it, I just don't understand the project as well as I might, but I think they did a great job preparing the materials. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and then...
Mayor, for the record, David...
Mayor, for the record, David Renshaw is in the audience and can address that.
Wonderful. I'm going to go through and see what questions come up, and then invite our, our project leads and executive members up to kind of address those instead of doing it one by one, just so we don't run out of time to, to give everybody an opportunity. So Lonnie, initial thoughts or questions?
Actually, I'm pretty happy with the presentation to this point. The $717,000 that would be left after the $301,000 additional funding is roughly 10% of the total projects. And with the vote coming up in, what, six weeks? I'm actually thinking we probably should sit on those funds for cost overruns that we're going to, we will see in the next two years as these projects come to fruition, as we've only spent at this point about 15 to 20% of the funds available. I am fully supportive of the $301,000 increase in the budgets.
All right, thank you very much. And Victoria Ernst?
Thank you for the presentations. I agree with Debbie that I'd just like a little more information about the Splash Pad project. It seems, I mean, that was a really big jump, and I know that it's because there are added services, which I'm sure are great, but I just want a little more information about that. The other cost seems pretty reasonable to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Council President Garvin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Similar to others, the Splash Pad additional info from Renshaw would be appreciated on that. And then my other question would be on the library HVAC. What are we getting for that $100,000 that we wouldn't get through the standard load calculations that come in estimating processes for HVAC systems from reputable companies that I've worked with in the past? Typically, they, they do look at your, your window type and your square footage and your roof type and building type and everything else to get that load count to properly size the HVAC that they're bidding for, so it doesn't overwork the system and go out within the warranty period? So that would just be my question before we funded that $100,000, is what are we getting of additional value that we don't get through just a standard load count process?
Right, thank you very much. And so now, coming in to Council Chambers here, we'll start on our right this evening, Councilor Peralta?
Hold my questions. Thanks, Mayor.
Budget Committee Member Scott Cunningham?
Yeah, the only question that I would have is looking at some of the projects to, that I see that are kind of in seemingly somewhat planning stages, if we're expecting any more costs to go up, which would then affect future ARPA funds.
Thank you. And Counselor Payne?
Thank you. I, I have a question related to the Splash Pad, though its specific is, I'm curious if it includes the removal of the sand pit that is causing the damage to the Splash Pad. And then I have similar questions as Adam regarding the HVAC for the library and the addition of the $100,000 and a properly rated system and that, the total of that being contributed to an upgrade versus a consultant. And I'm curious about the ambulance replacement and that $20,000, and whether that's to get the ambulance from Tillamook on the road, or if that's personnel costs, or what that is.
All right, thank you. And Counselor Mankey?
I think I'm fine, actually, with the overall package, but I, I'm interested in hearing what the other people are questioning.
Thank you. Gary?
Mayor, I think the information's been supplied is, is excellent. I, too, am Splash Pad curious. And, well, I'll, I'll yield to everyone else with the other points that have already been raised.
All right, thank you. Turn up.
Thank you. I support the roughly $300,000 request and increase, and I think it would be wise, as Scott touched on, to wait and see as these projects progress. We prioritize these 28, and so I would, I am not anxious to allocate the $700,000, maybe wait till some of the projects get further along, so we can see if the price tags continue to go up.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Nothing to add that hasn't already been added to the discussion. I look forward to hearing the information and stand ready to support as proposed.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth?
If you're taking numbers of who's saying what, I will add my vote to the, the first thing that caught my attention was $100,000 for the library HVAC. Having gone through a few HVAC processes, I didn't need a consultant to tell me what was needed for the building, so I'm very curious what we're getting out of that. And then I really don't have any questions on the Splash Pad. I'm, I'm happy with, with anything we can do in that park to help make it better. It is, that is definitely the number one item among the kids that I've talked to in the City of McMinville to play with. So I think that's a great thing, other than I hope the sand pit goes away, since that's what's created a lot of this problem. And then I would also say, in lieu of, we don't have a Plan B on the, the fire redistricting, and we don't, and we don't know how these are going to play out in the end, I would also like to see us sitting on that $700,000.
All right, thank you very much. And so with that, we'll invite up David Renshaw to talk about our, our hot topic here, the Splash Pad at Discovery Meadows.
Well, David anticipated these questions and sent us some pictures, so I am going to do the share screen again and get those up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm, I'm David Renshaw, I'm with the Public Works Operations Division, and I'm here specifically for the Splash Pad curious. I'm a little curious myself, so we'll have to get through this together. I'll be exercising muscle, I haven't exercised in about 20 years, so it'll be good. I would encourage you to, to look at this as a reimagined investment, to be honest with you. And I'll kind of talk a little bit, kind of where we are and how we got to where we're at.
Mr. Renshaw, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but exactly...
Oh, sorry about that, ma'am. Better? So, as you know, the Splash Pad is the most heavily visited park in season or none. Tremendous amount, it's tremendously popular, tremendously well-visited. It's the only free water-based activity that we offer, so it's a terrific, terrific thing. The existing system was built in 2005, it's pretty much at the end of its life, been a very good system, but as I said, it's at the end of its life. It consists of a mechanical vault. I see Jennifer got the photo up, excellent. Mechanical vault would be kind of up the middle of the picture there, middle of that sidewalk, Jennifer, there you go, a little, little further down, there you go, by the top of the arrow. That's an in-ground vault, all the mechanical, the pumps, filters, all the stuff is in that vault. That requires a confined space entry for our sta, our staff, which is a permitted process. Every time they enter that space to do daily maintenance, they have to fill out a permit, it's an OSHA requirement, so it adds a certain amount of time and effort to the process. The Splash Pad is maintained as a swimming pool, so we maintain it to Oregon Health Department standards, chlorine levels, pH levels, those sorts of things, they're all monitored either remotely with our telemetry system or by hand count, just like in the old days, like I did when I was a lifeguard. Our staff recognizes the value of this system to the community and works really diligently to keep that thing afloat. When we had that heat dome, 116 degrees, our guys were out there, you know, we lost a pump and our guys were in that vault fixing the thermals to get the darn thing to run. You know, the, the staff puts a tremendous amount of time into this thing and really recognizes its value. That being said, it can be, it can be challenging because of the age and complexity of the system we have, and it consumes a terrific amount of staff time in a, in a time of the year, quite honestly, when we don't have a lot of staff capacity. So in revisiting the costs earlier this year, as Jennifer talked about, and talking with a consultant, we're, we're hoping to engage in this, it became pretty clear that it's possible that the new mechanical system that we're envisioning won't match up with the nozzle system that's on the pad. In, in our pad, the nozzles are at grade, and so it's basically, it's like a giant sprinkler system, and the nozzle just shoots straight out. It's not, it's not impossible, but it's likely that, that won't be able to be the case. So that was kind of an aha moment for us, right? It's okay, we kind of may need to think about this. And as been pointed out a couple times, yes, in this new imagined version, the sand pit will go away. The sand pit was part of the original design of the park. At that point, in 2005 or so, sandplay was really a popular thing in, in playgrounds, and it's done very well. It just doesn't do really well next to a, a water feature that has pumps and valves and, and rotating things, and it just hasn't been a great thing. So where that leads us to is, is kind of where we wound up. And where we wound up was trying to reimagine the process, and, and of that $311,000, about a third of it is simply increased costs, looking at the original scope and how those costs have increased due to inflation. The other two-thirds, we added two key elements. One key element is to add above-ground features, and as we go through the slide, or the, my, my pictures here, and we'll get to those in a minute. Those are features that, that basically, they're, they're almost like play elements that sit above the grade. They're interactive elements, the kids can, there you go, the, the kids can touch them, play with them, much like you see in, in a, in a water park. They have a secondary value in that they tend to be war, they tend to use less water, because instead of running all the time, they're, they're only activated when the kids touch them in some manner. And then the other piece of that would be, if you go back to the aerial, Jennifer, if you would. If you look at that sand pit on the right, we've, we've kind of reimagined that as a space where we can add some, some more shade, whether it be trees and, and planters or parasols, and some much-needed seating. And that, that will transfer from a sand pit to, to simply a flat concrete space with additional parasols or possibly a small shelter, I'm not quite sure what that's going to look like, but extra seating. That will do two things. Number one, it will be way easier to take care of. And number two, we'll, we'll have that additional seating that, quite frankly, we need when, when the load is high. So what we're trying to do here is a couple of things. We're trying to create a system that's, that's more maintenance-friendly, that's, that's a small piece of this. We're trying to create a system that's more reliable, that we can serve, serve the public and, and meet that, that service level requirement. And we're trying to improve the user experience, trying to have something that's just, just a better deal for folks. So I'm going to throw some buzzwords at you. This, this thing is, it's, it's going to be the most visible, most impactful ARPA project I think the city can offer, quite honestly. More people will see this and experience this than many of the projects you'll see. It's, it's really, really a key, a key thing. Some of the fancy words I could throw out are zero depth, it's very safe, you don't have to, you don't have to learn how to swim, okay? It's interactive, it's, it's water immersive, it's inclusive, it's multi-generational, it's reduced maintenance, it's less staff capacity. But I think, as I look back over doing this for over 40 years, it's a word that I forget that I don't use very often. It's just more dang fun, is the deal. It's just more dang fun for those kids and, and for, you know, folks when they visit the thing. So with that, you know, I'll certainly take any questions you all might have, or I might just slink away.
Thank you. And if councilors and budget committee members are comfortable, we'll, we'll let Mr. Renshaw go and try to get our additional questions answered before the 7 o'clock hour.
I just have one question. The cool thing about the current park is the surprise shots you never know are going to get you. Is this one going to be the same way where we'll have periodic surprise shots that'll get the kids when they're standing over or near?
Well, I can't tell you that, sir. It'll, it'll all depend on how it's programmed. I, I, I will tell you, as a, as a sneak preview, you could take a look, a lot of, we'll be working with the same consultant that did Toalton's feature, at the, at the Toalton Commons. The summer, we won't probably have this type of scope they'll have, but it's the same idea.
Thank you very much. And then Library Director Jenny Berg, if you would like to take the second question about the additional $100,000 in library HVAC. And again, I'll probably try to, if, if you'll try to answer all the questions that were asked, we'll try to not do follow-up questions only because we have two more questions and a 7 o'clock meeting. Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, my, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council and Budget Committee. And unfortunately, the library HVAC is not more dang fun as compared to the water feature. So the, the library HVAC is a, an extremely old and complicated system. It's running in two separate buildings, one that was built in 1912 and one that was built in 1985. And they really are pretty much two separate buildings connected by sky bridges. I, I don't know if I mentioned, but the, the system itself is, there's parts of it that are more than 40 years old, and it's been really tough to find parts. We have been piecing it together for at least the last 15 years, if not longer, in terms of, okay, this little piece is broken, let's fix this. And the people that we have working on it at various times have, have, you know, it's kind of a Frankenstein system at this point in time. So, and we don't have anyone on staff, obviously not on the library staff, but on city staff who is an expert in HVACs to the extent that we need and who has the capacity to figure this out. I think the other thing to, that's important is that this is a building that community members have deemed that they want to remain as, in the, in the, in the city and used in the city, and, and so we're, we're trying to do what we can to actually bring, bring it up to speed, given all of those difficulties. The original budgeting was a, I hate to say it, but there wasn't, there wasn't any, there hadn't been any consultant to say, oh, here's what it will cost. There wasn't anyone that, that was able to say, here's this complicated system, and this is what it's going, going to cost to bring it up to, to modern speed. And so that was a, an estimate that was from your library director, who surprisingly doesn't have a lot of experience in HVAC technology, although had had, you know, I'd had a little bit of information from the previous building assessments. And so we, you know, thinking that I, thinking that I could hire somebody to make the changes that needed to be made, then finding out that, well, what are those changes that need to be made? And that's where the consultant, I was advised by other city staff members that do know a little bit more about HVAC systems, that really we should bring in a consultant to say, hey, here's what needs to happen, here's the best way to go about it. And really, a consultant who doesn't have any skin in the game in terms of trying to sell us something, they're just saying, this is what the best system would be for this building or these buildings. And so that was the, kind of, the idea was to get a, something that would give us priorities and, and meter out, here are the things that could be done now, here are the things that could be done midterm, here are the things that could be done later. And given that, still not sure, have not brought in a consultant yet, but still not sure about what that consultant cost would be, but knowing that the project will get further along, not just from a consultant perspective, but also then, okay, here, what are, what are our priorities and how can we start ticking them off? So that's the, the project. I know it's, it's, it's a little bit, maybe a little bit loose, which is probably similar to the library HVAC system itself.
Wow, way to, way to bring that home. Thank you very much. Thank you. We had, I think, two questions for Chief Leifert about additional dollars for ambulance replacement, and I do just want everybody to know, we have about six minutes until we need to start our council meeting, so FYI.
No problem, I can do this. The, the vehicle that we received from Tillamook is not a part of this, this conversation. That was a reserve vehicle that we purchased to bring on the peak unit. Until we got the new ambulances in, we needed to add an additional reserve unit, even though we have two new yet units coming in, because we'll be running five on the road full-time. So we need to have two so we can keep five fully functional. That's the purchase behind that. This $20,000, there's two things that occurred with the ARPA ambulance. Supply chain issues with chassis is well-known throughout the, the world. We made a switch from one type of chassis to a, to a We made a switch from one type of chassis to a, to a van, back to a van chassis in order to speed up the process. That reduced the price slightly, but then OHA has changed their rules, so those brought the price back up. And we thought we had the funds sufficient to do a $27,000 electric gurney lift in the back. We did not, but with the $20,000 above and beyond the original price, we can buy a demo for $20,000 and still come out fully packaged. So the additional 20 is dealing with the supply chain issues, the modification and changes in prices. The contract's already signed. It's ready to build. We just need the, we just needed the additional funds for the, the gurney lift.
Thank you very much, Chief. And the last question, Finance Director Quayar, if you could address it. Do we have continued additional costs that we are anticipating at this time?
No, we haven't attempted to project beyond. But many of the projects will be getting underway and will be included in your budget for FY '24. And ARPA lasts until FY '25, so there will be additional projects coming online then.
Wonderful. And so we do have about four minutes for follow-up questions. My guess is Library Director Berg. There's going to be some coming at you. Does anybody have a burning question that they need to do a follow-up on? Either raise your hand on Zoom or, yes, Council President Garvin.
Don't pay attention, Chief Skiles. I'm driving. But, Library Director Berg, my question was, on $100,000 in additional, how much of that is consultant fees versus how much of that is additional capacity for just thinking the system's going to cost more than your original back of the nap in math estimate?
You're muted. Director Berg.
You missed me saying a long um. So I, to be honest, I don't know. And there, at one point in time, a number of, you know, possibility of $80,000 for consultant fees, but that is truly, this is, this is a project that has kind of been put on the back burner in terms of where is the capacity? We all know that the, and this is, this is of absolutely no fault of the engineering department, but the engineering department has been, you know, lacking capacity for some time. They are now up to speed. We are in conversations with them about, because I need their assistance in moving this project forward. But there are a lot of unknowns. Sorry to say.
Okay. And Counselor Chenoweth?
I don't have a question. I would just say I would not be in favor of any money going to a consultant for this process. I am totally in favor of the HVAC system being redone, but the bid process is the consulting process. I don't think we need to pay for a consultant on top of that.
All right. Thank you. And so I think to summarize what we've heard today from the Budget Committee and including the Council, is that generally the, there's a desire to continue funding these projects through to completion. I'll just kind of look for some, some nods on that. And I hear that there are ongoing questions around the HVAC. I don't know that I hear enough to say that we would want to stop the process on that. So are we looking to move that forward? Counselor Menke?
I would certainly move it forward. It's been a long time waiting. And I, although I tend to agree with Chris, I don't know why we necessarily need a consultant. But I want to see it move forward. So I guess if we need more money, we'll need more money.
Counselor Peralta?
My, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. My bigger concern with the HVAC is that there's not enough budgeted for the cost of replacing the HVAC.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that.
That concern, if you couldn't hear on Zoom, was that perhaps it's not enough money to cover the HVAC system?
Yep, Mayor, and members of the Council and Budget Committee. I think the library directors' approach to this was prudent and honest. And I think it's the kind of thing, when you're working with buildings of that age and configuration, that anybody who pronounces a solution right now is going to be making some mistakes.
Exactly. I agree.
All right. Wonderful. Well, thank you all for your time today. Thank you, Budget Committee members. We know we have an especially heavy lift for you this year. And so we're very grateful for your service and hope you enjoy reading both of your budget packets. And we will adjourn the special meeting at 7:00 PM. And I would like to call the regular meeting of the McMinnville.
It's in a different Zoom link, so everyone needs to pop out.
And I'll just ask you to pause and we'll start our regular meeting one minute late. And everybody will take a two-minute, what? We're going to stay here? We're going to stay right here. Yes, we're physically going to stay in this location.
I'm getting.
No, I totally agree. It's like $25 to $60 a square foot. That's half a million to 1.2 million dollars. And they probably will need a consultant.
Good evening, and we thank you for your patience as we had a special Budget Committee meeting this evening right before our regular meeting. And so we're just starting a few minutes late. We apologize. As soon as councilors have an opportunity to rejoin us at the table, we will start the regular City Council meeting. Good evening. If you're just joining us, thank you for coming to the regular council meeting of the city of McMinnville. I'd like to say, well, first, it's April 11th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, to do a roll call.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Menke. Counselor Chenoweth.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Garvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drapkin.
Here. Thank you. And Counselor Payne, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
...... of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are now going to go into comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments. And any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature. And we will announce you when your turn is up. You may also send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, and we will announce you. I, I know we have a few folks signed up and we have a few folks in the gallery in, including Anna Barsadi. And please welcome, I'm going to start with you. I know you came for the six o'clock meeting and have come back and have stayed late to be able to provide this public comment. So please join us up here. State your name and address for the record. And welcome to the McMinnville City Council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for your time and all the hard work you're doing. My name is Anna Barsadi. I live at 615 Southeast Rumel Street here in McMinnville. I'm here this evening with Erica Fox, who's one of our school counselors. We are here together, representing Dunaway Middle School, to talk about our upcoming Service Day, which is on June 8th. And Ms. Fox will share some history and what Service Day is.
Hi. Thank you for the time this evening. So I've been working at Dunaway since 2007. And we have been doing our annual Service Days probably for the last 12 years approximately. It's our opportunity to get our students out into the community and connected with different organizations and groups and businesses that are a part of their community. It's been one of the most wonderful opportunities we've had to see students really thrive and connect to their community and feel like they have ownership of their community and that they can actually bring forward something. I think middle school kids quite often think that they can't offer as much to adults. So it's a really great opportunity for our kids to connect and to give back to their community and be able to really step forward as, you know, active members of McMinnville. So I'm going to hand it back over to Anna as to why we're actually here today.
A couple of examples, just in case you're wondering what we actually do on Service Day. Things that we have done include tying blankets, fleece blankets for Juliet's house. They put together care packages for children. We go out to Rotary Park and work with Sunrise Rotary. We'll be doing some park cleanup. We spread bark chips at the dog park, a wide variety of things. And on June 8th, we're going to be sending out over 500 of our students into the larger community. So we are here tonight looking for two things. First of all, any connections, collaborative partners that you might have in mind. We have a list of about 30 organizations that we've been working with over the years. And the second thing is, if you want to have a couple hours with some adolescents, we would love to have you on site. All of our groups are chaperoned by staff members from Dunaway, but it's always wonderful to show the bright side, the hopeful side of the wonderful young adults that we have living in our community. So we are easy to get ahold of. We're both working at Dunaway. And the mayor also has our contact information.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And if you will be sure to leave your email addresses with Claudia Sisneros. And then I hear the call to council is for volunteer projects and volunteerism. So we will be sure that everybody has your contact information and can follow up with you individually as well. Thank you so much for coming and thank you again for coming back. Appreciate you. And Claudia, do we have anyone else signed up for public comment?
No one that has signed up.
No one has signed up. Is there anybody else in the gallery that would like to provide public comment this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? And is there anyone on the phone? Or do we still have a phone line? We do. And there's no one on the phone. Great. Okay. Thank you. Wonderful. And so I'd now like to invite our Community Development Director. Heather Richards up to present a status update on Any Door Place, the Navigation Center. I do just want to start by saying that we did invite YCAP to present this evening. They're not here to do that. So with that in mind, I'll be asking councilors to make sure that their com, or their questions are focused on city questions that we can answer. And while I'm sure you have YCAP questions, please understand that we can forward those to YCAP, but I just can't ask our staff to answer questions on behalf of them. And so with that, I will hand it over to our Community Development Director. And then we'll go to questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm going to share my screen. I am Heather Richards, Community Development Director for the city of McMinnville. And I have the opportunity to get involved in lots of different projects. And this is a project that is close to my heart. The Navigation Center for McMinnville, because I think it's going to serve a need in our community for our residents. So I wanted to give you an update on it. We're calling it Any Door Place now, but it is our Navigation Center. And walk you through what that is. It's a low-barrier shelter with onsite supportive services to help people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. And the purpose behind it is to sort of provide that one-stop shop for people to access services after they've achieved shelter in such a way that they become more stable and can work towards achieving permanent shelter. The onsite services will be counseling, medical provisions, employment, coaching, and housing, housing case management. So tonight, we're going to talk about the history of the project, the project logistics, the design concepts, and next steps. And we're going to do it through the lens of the city's role in the project. So we do have a partnership there's with YCAP on this project. And we've been working together on this for the last couple of years. I'll walk you through that. But the city has a very distinctive role and so does YCAP, and I wanted to share the city's role with you. In terms of the history of the project, this started in 2021 in the spring. Representative Noble was on the Housing Committee and was working with the committee on what's called House Bill 2001. That was an emergency housing bill. In that housing bill, they defined what a navigation center is based on the fact that there's study to show that providing onsite services with shelter does create stability and helps people achieve permanent housing. As a committee member, Representative Noble called city staff and said, "I have an opportunity to try and access some funds for a navigation center in McMinnville. Are you interested?" And we replied, "Yes." So if you know anything about the legislative session, it happens very, very quickly. There's phone calls at night. There's action the next day. There's more phone calls at night. So we were going through that series of back and forth with Representative Noble for a couple of weeks as we were working through that. But he, he offered the opportunity and we definitely took him up on that. House Bill 2001 originally had in it, as it was navigating through the process, six sites that it was going to provide funding for, and City McMinnville was one of those. It eventually got taken out of House Bill 2001 and put into what we call the Christmas Tree Bill, which is the bill at the end of the legislative session where there are earmarks for different projects. And so the city of McMinnville's navigation center was for $1.5 million in that House bill. The other cities that were also included in that House bill for navigation centers was Roseburg, Bend, Helping Hands by Bybee Lakes, which is near Portland, Medford, Salem, and Eugene. So mostly larger metropolitan areas, and McMinnville was able to get some funds through that process through Representative Noble. So what we did is, so that, that passed through the legislature in June of 2021. And then in the summer, in the fall, we started working on the project. The House Bill 2001 defined what a navigation center was. It defined what had to be services associated with that, which I just described to you. And then it also defined what an operator should be. So the House bill was clear that it needed to be an operator that had experience operating these types of shelters. And in our community, it is YCAP that has that experience. So we reached out to them. But also knowing that YCAP was in the midst of putting together Project Turnkey, we also reached out to providers in Salem to see if they wanted to partner with us as well. So we were working with different entities that could be operators for this site. We also put together a small project committee and started talking about site selection. So we didn't have a site in mind when we got the phone call. And we started looking at sites around the community that made sense from a variety of different perspectives. So access to the site in terms of ease of access, but also how discreet it was in our community to have this type of site and impact to the surrounding neighborhoods. We wanted to make sure that this fit in where it went so that it could be a permanent asset for our community. So with those two discussions, and that took a couple of months, we invited YCAP to the table. They were part of the site selection process. They were also part of the discussions of whether they would be an operator. And they were talking about that within their organization. And at the end of that conversation, it was clear that the best site for this navigation center was the site that YCAP owned on Adam Street, which is 327 and 329, Southwest Adam Street. And at the end of that conversation, we also concurred that YCAP was the best match in terms of an operator for the program. So with that, we put together a project development team in the winter of 2021 and early spring of 2022. That project development team was sort of an ad hoc team consisting of city staff and YCAP staff. It was myself and our building official, who has experience with these types of projects in his role with the city of Eugene originally, and then also in his volunteer work. And then also YCAP staff in terms of the executive director, Alexandra Henchgin, and Michelle Whiting, her assistant. So the four of us would meet every two weeks and talk about, "How do we move this project forward? What are the things that we need to put in place for this?" And looking at the site. The building official being part of those discussions was critical at the beginning because he helped us analyze the site itself. We also brought in a couple of general contractors from the community to help us walk the site and identify what potential issues there could be on that site as we were putting together the project itself. Based on those conversations, there was a recommendation that we go into a sort of alternative procurement process, which is called Construction Manager General Contractor, which is a different type of process for building a project. But we felt it was important in regards to this project because the site is an interesting site. It has a steep slope in the back of it. It has geotech issues in terms of the soils, and it has two existing homes on the site. And then the intention is to build an addition between the two homes and connect them. And the two homes are at different elevations. So lots of complexity associated with that. So we brought this to city council to do a CMGC process in December of 2021. To do a CMGC process, you have to go through an alternative procurement process. So adopt findings as to why you're doing this and how it will serve the community. And what a CMGC process means is you are identifying and hiring your contractor before you go out to bid on the project, and the contractor participates in the design piece of the contract so that they can provide their expertise in terms of constructability as the documents are being built by the architect, and then also help with value engineering. So they have two roles as a construction manager during pre-construction and a general contractor during construction itself. The two things it does, it also helps us sort of overlap some processes in terms of timeliness. If we wanted to get this, we knew it would be a complex project, but we wanted to be able to get it done in as timely a manner as possible. So if you see these three flow charts, it shows design, bid, build, which is your typical public improvement project for city municipalities. That's when we put together design documents, send it out to bid, and then open the bids and select a contractor. The Construction Manager General Contractor gets involved in the sort of detailed final design stage of it and provides input there. And then is working on putting their contractors together for the construction side of it at the same time. So they're working and getting out and talking to the subs to understand who's available and what the costs are, and they're working through those processes as those final design documents are putting together. So there's some savings of time there. And just for where we are right now, we're right around here. If you can see, you can't see my, isn't that great? We are right at probably the front part of the red arrow of Construction Management General Contractor. We're just finishing up designs, and we're going to be coming in with a construction contract for you here shortly. And that's the purpose of this update. So our partnership with YCAP, we had a lot of discussion as to how that would move forward, who was doing what in terms of the project itself. That was that small committee that was meeting every couple of weeks and talking about how we bring this project to bear in McMinnville. And after the discussion of where the strengths laid within the two organizations, it was decided that the city would manage the construction and build out the project itself. We would assume all construction responsibility and risk associated with the construction. And then when the certificate of occupancy is provided, we would then transfer it to YCAP. So we made that decision based on the fact that the city has the skill set and the expertise to manage these types of projects and the experience with them, and YCAP has the operational expertise. And so then it was decided that YCAP would operate it. We brought that to you as an agreement to memorialize those two relationships in May of 2022 with Resolution Number 2022-35. So after we went through that process, we then procured our architectural firm. We procured FFA Architects. If you recall, we had a hard time finding a firm at the time. There was a lot of ARPA dollars out in Oregon, firms that were tied up with work. So we reached out to FFA Architects. I have a relationship with them on previous projects and talked about, "Do you have the capacity to help us with this? We are trying to get this done." And we went through that process of procurement and signed a contract with them on May 24, 2022. We then hired a special projects manager in August of 2022 to move this project forward and serve as the project manager for it during the construction. That was an agreement with YCAP in terms of how we would manage the project construction, and that was Jody Christensen, and she's been serving that role since. And then we procured our construction manager. So we originally did the alternative procurement process, adopted findings. They says, "We can do this Construction Manager General Contractor." You typically are procuring them when you're close to being done with sort of your midway design, so that you can bring them in at that point. And so in December of 2022, we procured our Construction Manager General Contractor and chose Facular Construction, and they joined our team on December 13 with a contract with the city via Resolution Number 2022-74. So at the same time, we had heard from OHCS, that's Oregon Housing and Community Services, and they reached out to the city in March of 2022. They reached out to all those cities that were in that original House Bill 5024 that had the navigation center project and funds. And so we recognized that what you were awarded is probably not enough to build this. We want to provide additional funds. We have this grant opportunity, and we want to work directly with the recipients of House Bill 5024 funds. So they reached out to the city for that. The city worked with OHCS for a couple of months on what that potential grant application would look like. And after going through that process, we were meeting with YCAP at the same time, and the decision was made that it would be better to have the grant go to YCAP than to the city. So the OHCS had it designated for the city. We made a decision that it would be better to go to YCAP for a variety of different reasons. The most inherent one is that the grant funds needed to be spent by June 30 of 2023. And based on our timeframe, we didn't feel we could expend all the funds by June 30 of 2023. Newburgh was also in the process of building out an emergency low-barrier shelter, and there was the opportunity for them to participate in the funds in terms of construction dollars as well. They would be able to expend that by June 30 of 2023. And if you recall, Newburgh dedicated $200,000 of their ARPA funds to the operations of the McMinnville Navigation Center. So this was a way to give back to Newburgh. We brought that to the city council by Resolution Number 2022-61, which was an MOU with YCAP, McMinnville, and Newburgh that talked about that relationship in September 27 of 2022. And that same evening, we also amended our original agreement with YCAP for this particular project to allow interim navigation services at the First Baptist Church. So one of the provisions of the grant was that you needed to have services in your community by June 30 of 2023. All this was done with OHCS in terms of what we needed to do to make sure that that relationship and where the grant was going was appropriate. So in terms of the city construction management side of it, we're knee-deep in that right now. We just got the 50% design set on April 7, so last Friday. There was a page turner for that yesterday. So we all looked at that, including the Construction Manager General Contractor. We expect to get the guaranteed maximum price from the contractor on April 13, so later this week. So because the contractor's been involved in the design discussions, and even though we don't have 100% construction documents, they have enough, they feel comfortable enough with the design that they can give us a guaranteed maximum price, and they've been working with their subs on that. And that's part of the CMGC process. We hope to bring a contractor contract to you on May 9. We're on track for that. That's been our timeframe for many months now, and we are in a place where we can bring that to you. And then we hope to also have the final building set, so 100% construction documents to go into a building permit supplemental. We hope to have the 100% documents by May 9 as well, so that's a big day. And then we will be submitting permits on May 17. So here in the next couple of weeks, we're going to see a lot of activity moving this project forward so that we can get to groundbreaking. We expect the building permit review to take about eight to 10 weeks. And so we hope to have the building permits issued by July 1. We've been working with all of our partners on this project. So our internal partners being the building team, engineering team, and then McMinnville Water and Light, so that there's no surprises with them as they go through the building plan review. We then hope to have construction starting sometime in early July, and then a ribbon cutting in May of 2024. So in terms of the project logistics, this is a photo of the site where you can see the two existing homes that are on the two separate properties. It is two properties, and we will be doing a boundary line adjustment to make it one. And then you see the space between those two homes. You can also tell how they're offset from each other, both in elevation and setback. And the plans are to build an addition between the two homes, connecting them to add on space. So in the end, this facility will be about 7,300 square feet. That's still being meshed around a little bit, but the total square footage should be right around that. This shows the site in terms of the topography associated with the site and why the CMGC process was so important and how that new addition's going to sit on that topography. So it is a complex project. We have had a lot of geotech surveying on this site to make sure that we're engineering the foundation appropriately for it. These are elevations of the final product. So the hope behind this is that it doesn't look like some institutional facility, but really looks like three homes serving a purpose. And so you see the front elevations there, and then the rear elevations as well. For the rear elevations, it's important to note that there's a third floor, basement floor, based on that slope back there. This is a rendering of what it will look like with the new addition and the two homes rehabbed next to each other. The main entry point will be in the new addition. And then this is the first floor for the facility. So the property that's on the left-hand side, so the southern side, will be where the shelter exists. We're working towards 36 beds. And there will be a floor for families, a floor for women, and a floor for men. And then the middle of the site will be the sort of common area for the day services. And then the right-hand side of the site, the northern existing structure, will be where the onsite service offices are for the house case management and other partners. We talked a little bit about the design of this and how intentional it is and how the project management team is working through that. YCAP is leading all the design discussions. This will be their facility that they operate, and the architects have been working with them on it. But the whole intention behind this is, again, not to have an institutional-looking facility, but to have something that is calm and stabilizing and feels more like a home. And this gives some ideas of the different types of material palettes that are being chosen for the facility and the color schemes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. The next step for us will be to bring you a contract with Facular Construction for the construction of the project on May 9.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Counselors, do you have questions? Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the project update and looking forward to having the construction document in front of us in May. We'll now go to reports from counselors on committees and board assignments. I'll start on my left with Counselor Chenoweth.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Gary?
DEI AC meets this Thursday. MURAC met last week to hear about Public Art Property Assistance Program and Third Street Improvement Project RFP update. And then Public Safety Task Force met today and heard from two employees of the jail about that process and got an update from a subcommittee related to YCAP.
Nothing more.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Peralta?
Council government's adopted its services fees list that was sent to ONG Connections last week. Additionally, our request from the legislature for $5 million in planning funding for rural capacity seems to be moving pace. So that's good news, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Payne?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Menke?
The Affordable Housing Group met before Thursday of last month. And at that meeting, we had reports from various agencies, very fast ones, I might add. The mayor runs a very fast meeting. Because we had so many new people and people asking questions and stuff, what we thought we would do is get people into committees right away. And so I just kind of wanted to give you a list of some of the committees that people, I'm not going to give you who's assigned to them, but you know what we're going to be working on. One is a USDA letter, and probably Tom will be leading this. Topshower, it'll be a draft letter to be considered by the Affordable Housing Committee at the next meeting, before the next meeting assistance with supplemental data is requested. And this has to do with the USDA reviewing McMinnville's continued eligibility for the rural area designation, sorry. Okay. Which is necessary to continue to qualify for the USDA rural housing, development, housing programs and loans. So this is great. I mean, hopefully, we will be able to continue this. Staff has prepared a draft letter to submit to the USDA to support continuation of McMinnville's rural area designation. And this goes for several years if we are accepted, correct, Heather? Okay, so that's good. Then we have another committee that's looking at code amendments. Staff, again, is leading this. And the staff has prepared a draft amendment for the zoning ordinance that will allow, that would authorize an affordable housing incentive through small lot allowances as part of subdivisions, allowing additional lots, which are smaller than typical minimum lot size in subdivisions, in exchange for a certain number of lots being deed restricted for affordable housing. And then finally, there's incremental small-scale affordable housing. And this group I happen to be in, this work will include research on how other organizations are achieving incremental, small-scale distributed affordable housing, both smaller-scale ownership, rental products, and including use of partnerships, incentives, grants, and loans and mandates. Most of what we've looked at up to this point in time is dealt with fairly large developments, and that's not what we're working with here. So this is a way to kind of see if we can expand what we're doing in this area with smaller lots. And that's about it.
Thank you.
I haven't made Heather a terror, she's terribly angry at me by disclosing this information.
And Council President Garvin?
Yeah, I visit McMinnville, the airport, and YCOM haven't met. YCOM was supposed to be today, but our April meeting was canceled. And fire districting, we're continuing to push forward with that. I have some campaign signs in my pickup, if anybody would like to take one of those on the way out. And outside of that, Union President Godfrey and myself are speaking Thursday this week, and we're also speaking on Friday. Thank you, everybody, for your support.
Thank you. I wanted to just give a shout out to Noel and Maya for the great employee newsletter that went out, and I hope everybody had a chance to review that. There was a lot of great information in there about a number of our different departments. Fairly, very thorough, so thank you for that. On April 17, Community Development Director Richards and I will be attending the board meeting of the YCCO in terms of to present on our funding request. And so we'll have the results from that. That meeting does start at 3:00 PM, which is when my airplane lands, so I will be attending remotely from my phone. Also upcoming this week, I'm honored to be presenting with our city manager a keynote address to the International City County Managers Association on successful intergovernmental agreements. And we'll be talking about the Stratus Village project, for which the city and Confederated Tribes and Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron, the county, and the Housing Authority of Yamhill County won this year's Regional Collaboration Award. And we'll also be talking about the formation of the Motelling Project during the pandemic, and then how that ultimately turned into Project Turnkey, which is an ongoing sustaining relief. And I was honored to be invited to join members of our fire department this week to host Congresswoman Salinas. Thank you very much for the invitation, President Godfrey, and I thought it was a great, a great meeting. I learned, I learned things that I wish I didn't know, and things that I'm delighted to know. I, the, the overall, despite the number of packets it's been in, walking around and calling out the age of every vehicle that's in the fleet, and really letting, having that sink in, in a, in a in-person, you know, when you're looking at the vehicle and you're, and you're hearing that typically these vehicles would be replaced every 10 years, and we're looking at vehicles that are decades and decades old and needing replacement, and made a really big impact. And, and then also, I didn't know that the, the, the fire department's mascot was named Sparky, and so that was also a wonderful, new piece of information, which is related to the State of the City Address, Community Fair, and awards, which will be happening on May 25th, and I certainly hope everybody in this room can attend. I'm very excited to be doing this this year. Claudia and Noel have been working with a small team to put this together, so our State of the City Address and Community Fair will be right here on a Thursday afternoon. The State of the City Address will be predominantly outside and open to the public to attend. We will be inviting Sparky. I just haven't sent that email yet. But it should be a great day. We have, all of our departments have been working on putting together projects, so if we have a vehicle per se, so Bookmobile, a fire truck, Water and Light has their electrified demo truck, those things will be outside in the parking lot. This is on a Thursday evening, so it'll overlap with the tail end of Farmer's Market. And then inside, departments will be set up with projects they're working on, so the community can come and engage and talk about what's happening. So I'm very excited, and thank you for all your work on that. Mark your calendars, big day. And with that, department head reports, and I'll start with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Community Development Director Richards?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Two things I wanted to remind everyone. We did receive an appeal for the Gwendolyn Hotel decisions by the Planning Commission to approve the four land use applications. We have, and that appeal goes to City Council for consideration. So we have scheduled that public hearing for April 18th, so next Tuesday, from 6:00 to 10:00. And if we need to go to another night, it will be April 19th, from 6:00 to 10:00 as well. And then I wanted to let people know that in about two weeks' time, we'll be sending out a mailing to about 2,000 businesses in our community, telling them about three different business assistance programs that we have available to them. So if you own a business, keep your eye out for this. One is for business assistance grants to help with employee retention and onboarding relative to loss of employees during COVID, and trying to get employees back into businesses. The other one is a 40-60 forgivable loan program, so 40% of the loan will be forgiven outright based on performance metrics over two years. And then the third one is free training and mentorship for, for businesses that are willing to commit to a six-month program, to help them with a business plan in terms of either new business development or expanding your business. And we're, we have a consultant that will be working on that with us, and then if, as you complete the program, there will be a stipend at the end to implement that plan. So it's first come, first served, and we're going to have sign-ups on our website, so keep your eyes out for that.
Thank you very much. Chief, anything to report?
A couple of things, Mayor. One, I'd like to recognize the level of service that our community employees, the city of McMinnville employees, and the elected officials provide to their community. I have been engaged with Department of Revenue, these Secretary of State's Office, and OHA in a variety of different aspects in the last month and a half, and I have to say that our team does an outstanding job of service compared to the bureaucratic nightmare of some of those other agencies at the state. So I wanted to say thank you, because when we need help, we need to do work, our teams are always there to support. And even if we can't provide the help, we always have the answer or find the answer. And I just appreciate working with a team like that. So I'll stop with that, stop cracking on the state agencies. A couple of updates for the organization itself. We'll be taking delivery next week of a refurbished ambulance coming out of Centralia's ambulance production, Ron Northwest. The other one that we were talking about this evening is scheduled for August delivery. And we took delivery of a used ambulance to build up our, our reserve fleet from Tillamook. They, they were very gracious, and only charges $2,500 for the transfer of an ambulance. We put a couple thousand dollars into getting it up to meet the requirements of OHA. We're waiting on the OHA license for that, but that will give us the additional resources that we need for reserve ambulances. But also, we're geared up and ready to deploy the eight-hour paramedic-only ambulance as soon as I can get one of them licensed by the state to get it on the road, so.
Great. Thank you. And then Claudia Cisneros, our city recorder, and perhaps Finance Director, do you want to, do you want to, what's the term? There's a baseball term for being next at bat, but I don't know what it is, because I'm not great at sports.
On deck.
On deck.
Thanks. Two quick things for me. On your consent agenda, item number 6B, the OLCC application for Acorn Oak, there is an additional number on the address, which is 7. It's supposed to be 546. This does not prevent from voting or approving this item, since it was just an error on the agenda. And then, secondly, the mayor had talked about the joint effort we're doing with Mac Water and Light with DBS Consulting. We have rescheduled the May 9th and May 10th meetings with them. We are looking at doing Tuesday, June 13th, at a work session with DBS Consulting from 5:30 to 7:00, and then doing the joint meeting the following day, on Wednesday, June 14th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And I'm polling council around right now to see if there's any issues with that date.
So that, again, is if counselors have any issue with the June 13th and 14th date, and this has been a rather Herculean effort by both Claudia and Trina at Water and Light to find dates where we could have both bodies fully present.
And June 13th is our regular scheduled council night, so.
Yes.
13th, we would do it during our work session time slot, so 5:30 to 7:00, and then our regular meeting starts at 7:00, and then we'd have another council meeting, or, yeah, the following day, on Wednesday, June 14th.
That was Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yes. Wonderful. Excellent.
Then I will send council and Trina a confirmation email, and you'll see calendar invites tonight, because I don't want anyone else to book this date.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Finance Director Quayre?
I have nothing further to report tonight. Thanks.
All right. And then, as we go, I'm going to go to Library Director Berg next, and Mr. Renshaw, would you mind presenting on behalf of Public Works if you have anything, if you have anything? I invite you to be on deck.
I'm going to get it.
Nothing for you?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to report on the library. I would like to invite all of you to come visit the library on Saturday. You can start at 11:00 AM with Read to a Dog, Pause for Love Therapy Dogs will be there, and if you're a little nervous about reading aloud, it's always great to start by reading to a dog. And then while you're there, in the Carnegie Room, you can also check out the refresh of the plaza that's being funded by the library foundation. And we are to the point now where there are four different workers that are on hands and knees with tiny paintbrushes, filling in the lettering on the book pavers, which is a pretty impressive feat. And then I encourage you to come upstairs. We've got a art display of art made out of books, so recycled books that are very whimsical and interesting. There, those are both in the children's room and upstairs in the teen area. And then while you're there, please stop by my office and say hi, because I'll be there too. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I also like talking to dogs. I find that to be quite therapeutic. And to our HR Director, Vicki Hedges?
Last week, our insurance providers, CIS, hosted harassment discrimination training for our employees, so helping us stay in compliance with that. And then also last week, we deployed a benefit survey, trying to get a better understanding of what our employees' needs are, with a focus on hiring and retaining employees. So we're excited to get the results back for that in a couple of weeks.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. We'll move into our consent agenda. Does any counselor wish to have any item pulled from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary, second from Counselor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, signify by saying nay. And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-17, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon in the amount of $235,000 for McMinnville Loan Forgiveness, Forgiveness Program. And I'd like to call on our Community Development Director, Heather Richards, to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is part of the grant I was talking about earlier. So Representative Noble also provided, this is a Representative Noble night, Representative Noble also provided the city of McMinnville $750,000 to utilize to serve our business community and help them with recovery from COVID and resiliency. Our McMinnville Economic Vitality Leadership Council worked through what that program would look like and where the needs were, and developed a program that responds to business needs for workforce development, for funding for their businesses, and for training. So tonight, in front of you, is a contract with Micro Enterprises Services of Oregon. They are a community development financial institution. They have not worked in McMinnville before, so this is a great way to establish a relationship with what we call a CDFI. CDFIs typically are a great financing institution for businesses who struggle to get traditional financing. So sometimes that is businesses that are run by marginalized populations in our community who are just not able to get financing through mainstream services, or have other reasons for that. So we're working with them on a 40-60 forgivable loan program, so that's what I described before, which is where 40% of the loan will be forgiven based on performance metrics. So there is, the contract in front of you is for a not-to-exceed level of $235,000. About $200,000 will go into those forgivable loan programs, and then $35,000 will go into administration. The administration fee is 15%. The reason why it's 15% is because what MISO does is they work individually with the businesses, not only to underwrite them, but also throughout the time that they have the loan, so that they can be successful with their performance and paying it back. And so that sort of one-on-one work with businesses is something that we're really looking forward to. The loans are up to $20,000 for businesses. And I wanted to point out to you, thank you, to Counselor Payne, who did a great job reading her materials. She noticed a typo on page 224 of your packet, which is page three of the contract that's attached to the resolution. It's Section 4.1, and it seems like a link that was embedded in the document did not translate. So right now, it says, "Except as otherwise set forth in this section," and it has error exclamation point, "reference source not found. The city agrees to pay." It should say, "Except as otherwise set forth in this section, the city agrees to pay consultant on a time and materials basis." So my recommendation for you tonight is if you pass this resolution, that we make that amendment and delete that, that, that section of 4.1. The other thing with this grant, this forgivable loan program, we've been working with the state, so this, these are state ARPA funds, so we're working through compliance relative to state ARPA funds, and 40% of the loan is forgiven, and so some of these funds are going to that forgiven piece of it, but also 60% of the loan is paid back, and then that can come back to the city and continue to be invested past the ARPA program in similar types of activities in terms of business assistance. So it is a program that can live beyond, so to speak.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any council discussion? Nope, not seeing any. I would ask for an amended motion, the amendment being to correct Section 4.1, removing the erroneous language and replacing it with the suggested language. So I would ask for that amended motion to approve Resolution 2023.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Heather, thanks for presenting this. My question would be, outside of the questions called out in the packet for the applicants, is there any terms put on what they can use this money for, if it's just for operational costs, or it needs to be for capital improvements, or equipment purchases, or what, if any conditions are put on the money?
So the, the only, the only conditions that are put on it is that it has to show some, that the, that the investment is based on impact relative to COVID. So that's our barometer test with the state. What we didn't want to do is define what that was, like thread a needle, what that was, because it could be different for different businesses. If there is a question about whether it's compliant with the state program and their parameters, we have a very close relationship with our compliance monitor, and she's going to be working with us as we go through this process for compliance. But it, it's pretty wide open in terms of operations or capital construction. It just has to meet that test of need based on impact from COVID.
Thank you.
And the need could be recovery or resiliency. So the resiliency part of it is, I'm building my business in such a way so it's resilient for the next type of event like this as well.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Just getting ready to make a motion.
Oh, thank you, sir. Go for it.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 2023-17 with a recommended amendment.
I have a motion. I'd ask for a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth, a second from Council President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, signify by saying nay. The resolution has passed unanimously, and I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 7:53 PM.